This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, this is the notice of a regular meeting of the Rome City Council. Today is Thursday, March the 11th at 6:30 PM. The meeting, I'm sorry, excuse me, notice is hereby given in accordance with the order of the Office of the Governor issued March 16th, 2020, and most recently extended on March the 6th. The City Council of the City of Rome will conduct its regular meeting scheduled for 6:30 Thursday by telephone conference in order to advance the public health goals of limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing, to slow the spread of the coronavirus. This meeting is closed to in-person attendance by the public. Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call for the quorum. Place one, Josh McCabe.
President.
Place two, Michelle Ty.
Here.
Place three, Elaine is not with us tonight. Place four, Sam Eason.
Here.
And place five, Ashley Majors.
Here.
And we have a quorum and we will continue on with our meeting. We have public presentations and input. Shannon, are you with us?
Yes ma'am, I'm here.
Okay, can you go with that one?
Yes, the first speaker is Kathy Coffey.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, good evening everyone. My name is Kathy Coffey and I live at 1102 Mount Lane. Paying my water bill online is something I like to do and I would like to see the payment options expanded if it's possible. The options now, as I understand it, are you can mail a check, pay in person, pay online with two options, which is auto pay out of a bank account or a credit card with a credit card company charging us $299. Money comes directly out of a bank account for auto pay. Would it be possible to add a third option of one-time payments each month using a bank account also? Maybe this would alleviate some of the burden of some citizens having to pay the $299 the credit card companies impose. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Next up is Joe Hernandez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes sir.
Hi, I'm Joe Hernandez, I live on School Road. Um, I just want to say congratulations Rome residents, we have finally come together for a single cause and that cause is to make us the laughing stock of North Texas. The amount of bickering and mudslinging is so exhausting and embarrassing. Just imagine if the amount of energy was used in a positive manner for the betterment of the city. Why must, why must we live in the past and point fingers and blame? Regardless of what has happened in the past, that is not productive for our current or future city issues. We need to come together and work towards improving our city and our future. The social media and personal attacks need to stop because all y'all doing is providing entertainment for other cities and embarrassing our city. As it sits now, our city is in dire needs of improvement as a whole, from city buildings to old water lines to updating and improving our sewer system. These are issues we have to face head-on and right now, as the city does not have the funds to address any of these issues. Growth is coming, whether we like it or not, and the only way to make improvements might be to raise taxes regardless of who is on the council. In closing, I would also, I would make, I would like to recommend council create a solution to address the amount of open record requests. City staff has eight requests for open records on the agenda which has taken them away from their duties for approximately 39 hours for several more requests to on process. With the extensive amount of requests that has taken city staff away from their daily duties, if a cap cannot be put on the amount of requests, maybe the city needs to look into hiring additional staff. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Next up is Michelle Decredico. Michelle, when you ready?
Yes, my name is Michelle Decredico. These words are my own personal opinion and not representative of any organization or group that I'm associated with. Regarding tonight's agenda item on the resignation of Chief Sam Love, being the mayor at the time Chief Love was hired, I would like to say thank you to Chief Love for his years of service to our community. We appreciate your service and wish you the best for the future. Next, I would like to address the City Council about the vacancy for the police chief position. The city does not need a repeat of what happened in 2015 with former police chief Brandon Davis and the fear that many of our citizens lived through, not to mention the lawsuits and attorney general investigation which culminated in Mr. Davis surrendering his peace officer's license. I lived through that hell as mayor with the police chief that was led by Ms. Wilson, who was mayor pro temp at the time. What they did to our city during that time has not been forgotten and it should never be repeated. The city does not need to have Ms. Wilson handpicked in other areas to serve her wishes instead of in the best interest of the citizens of Rome. Instead, follow the example that was used in the hiring of Chief Love and have an independent oral review board made up of members with a law enforcement background who can assist in the vetting process for finding the best candidate. And finally, Mayor Wilson, you campaigned on everyone getting along. What are you doing about all the negativity about the city that is on Facebook now? I believe that you are supported by the Facebook group Rome Watch, which continues to post negativity about the city to which you are now the leader. You, what are you going to do to combat that negativity that this group is posting about the city that you run? Or are you still being supported by a group that seems to like to incite violence against a mayor that they do not agree with, at least according to their posts? It's time for you, Mayor Wilson, to set the tone at the top, show the public that you are trying to work, combat the negativity. I fear that you are saying one thing to one group and a different thing to another group and that is not what a mayor should be doing. The public is watching what you're doing and in my opinion, you are not setting an example of working together as a team or as a community. It is time that you exhibit the qualities that you campaigned on to the people. It is time for you to combat the negativity about the cities posted on groups such as Rome Watch. You represent the city now and not your own personal biases. Please begin to represent all the city and not just the group that supported you. Please bridge the divide, it is your responsibility and duty to the citizens.
Thank you ma'am. Next up is Tommy Eason. When you're ready.
Good evening all, my name is Tommy Eason. I live at 1107 Mount Lane. I would like to discuss the mask situation. I saw on Facebook that two elected officials were at a meeting in Boyd last week. Although I agree with checking out a different city on how they run their meetings, I was appalled to see that most of the guests in the audience were not wearing a mask, including our officials from Rome. I was glad to see Tim Robison's wife, Pat, had her mask on. If you haven't heard from the Center of Disease Control, the CDC, that using a mask is more for the protection of the people around you, although it does still protect you, why would you be in a crowded area not protecting the citizens in their best interest and heart? When I go back to House of Commons, we need to wear a mask to protect people on the council, yourselves, and the citizens of this town. Thank you.
Deborah B. Kraft, are you on the call?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, when you're ready.
My name is Deborah B. Kraft, I live at 360 West Second. I would like to address the council, the administrator, and the mayor on the subject of the old city hall located at 105 West First Street. In recent meetings, it has been mentioned that a structural engineer would need to inspect the old city hall before we could consider a remodel or restore. Please see the attached minutes from the council meeting dated 4/13/2017 where ex-mayor Pittman informed the council in a public meeting, rebuild of city hall. Mayor Pittman announced that we had a structural engineers look at the building and there are no structural problems. Please do not waste money on repeating the same since it's already been completed. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Mayor Wilson, that was all that I have on my list. Mayor, you're muted.
Okay.
Hello?
Carvin, do we have a procedure for this?
Well, it appears that we have been moved into recess for a moment while the mayor attempts to reconnect. It's not a requirement of the waivers that we have video, all that is required is that we have audio.
Just talk. Okay, can, can y'all hear me now?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. They announced that I, and this is.
Mayor, you're echoing.
We're gonna get a lot of feedback with both.
Hey, I'm going to.
Joanne, may I suggest on your screen, your GoToMeeting screen, at the very bottom there are four buttons, a mic, camera, screen, and leave. Do you see those? Move your mouse.
I don't have it. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I apologize, I'm just completely off the computer on the iPhone. Then, I have three announcements. One, I saw today where Wise County is now getting more of the COVID vaccinations. And also, the list I saw said Saginaw and Walmart, Bridgeport, Brookshires had 90 or so, so they may be gone. And the Sells Clubs and all the Walmarts are starting to provide them. I suggest you call first because I don't know if you have to be on a specific list or what, but that was a positive thing that I saw on the thing, so, you know, good luck for that. And I think the city hall has closed, not closed, they have opened. Two o'clock now, it's gone to four o'clock, so if you have city business, it is now available. And thirdly, Michelle, I don't know exactly what you're talking about, but I'd be more than happy to meet with you personally if you call Shannon and set up an appointment. And, you know, by the way, you keep throwing up the past and gentlemen spoke earlier and said, let's get all out of the past and go to the future. I really appreciate that outlook, I'm trying to have the same one. Okay, now we're going to move, we also have two events coming up. March the 20th is the City Council Visioning Budget Workshop. It had to be moved if you have another date. It's going to Saturday, March the 20th. March the 25th is our next council meeting. So let's move on to the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Mayor, Councilmember Majors has her hand up.
Sorry Mayor, sorry Mayor, I had an announcement. I would like to make an announcement. I've been noticing a lot of questions regarding our trash, trash service, pardon me. And so, citizens, if you have any concerns, if you could, please call City Hall tomorrow and request a second trash can, a green can. And if you have bulk items, call Julie and she can direct you to Waste Connections and to have any mattresses and love seats, recliners that can be picked up before bulk pickup. So please, contact City Hall, let's get those personal trash cans picked up as well. So, been noticing a lot of questions, concerns on social media, so, thank you.
Okay, since I can't see Ashley at all, I can see the rest of you. Does anyone else have any comments? Well, we'll keep moving forward then, now we will go to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the City Council regular session, the resolution allowing, authorizing continued participation with the Encore Cities and with, to receive the Rome Police Department 2020 Racial Profiling Report. Do I have any comments on any of that? Okay, the monthly staff reports and board minutes are in this.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
We need to take a vote on the consent agenda, we need to receive, we need to get a motion and a second and a vote.
Okay. Do we have anybody making a motion?
Very quickly, if I'm looking at the agenda, I was just going through my packet and I'm missing the, the racial profiling report. Can somebody tell me in my packet where I'm gonna find that?
It starts on page 16.
Page 16, thank you very much Shannon.
You're welcome.
And Sam, if I remember correctly to the back, after all the good stuff, there's a summary that may tell you a little bit more.
It's only two.
I can read it. Shannon, did we get a motion in second on the approval of the consent?
Not yet, sir.
No, no sir.
Motion that we approve these items on the consent agenda.
No, I second.
Okay, I have a first and a second to approve the consent agenda. Does anybody have any just?
Councilmember McCabe made the motion to approve the consent agenda and Councilmember Majors made the second.
Okay, and let's have a vote. Councilman one.
Aye.
Councilman two, Michelle Ty.
Aye.
Councilman four, Sam Eason.
Aye.
And Councilman five, Ashley Majors.
Aye.
Motion is approved and we'll go forward now to the monthly staff reports and board minutes. We have administration, building and development, fire rescue, municipal court, police, and public works. We have the minutes of the regular planning and zoning commission meeting and minutes of the regular parks and recreation meeting dated March the 1st.
Joanne, Sam has.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, I have a comment to make, please.
I can't hear you real, you want to make a comment, Sam?
Yes, Shannon.
Yes, go ahead.
Shannon, on the date for the park and rec meeting, that meeting occurred on the fourth, or the, yeah, the fourth, not the first.
I'm sorry, thank you for that.
And P&amp;Z was on the first.
We have February P&amp;Z minutes in the packet because this item is usually for the past month, just like the admin reports.
Got it.
And Shannon will be able to change the parks meeting to whatever date that was. Do we have any other changes that we need to make on this? Then we'll move on from there to the, do we need a vote on that, Carvin?
No, you do not.
We'll move on to the regular session, whole business. Item G is update discussion and any necessary action regarding latest developments for COVID-19 and mitigation efforts and actions within the city. Cynthia, can you take that one?
Sure, thank you Mayor. As most people know, and certainly Mayor and council, you know that the governor has taken some action. Wise County, we had our call last, I guess it was this week, on Tuesday, and Wise County is encouraging mask wearing but not requiring. City Hall continues to operate as we have been, although we have opened, we are keeping the doors open until four o'clock. So unless I hear differently, that's where City Hall is doing.
And we're asking everyone to respect the mask rule, is that correct?
We're encouraging, yes, we're encouraging but not requiring. I mean, as I understood it, we were following Wise County and that's what Wise County is doing, so, yes.
Okay.
The question for council would be, we have been limiting the lobby to one person at a time, so my question would be, do we want to continue to require that? It is a small lobby. And normally, honestly, I don't think we have, it's not like we have a lot of people in there very often anyway. You know, there have been some times when people have had to wait when there's been somebody in the lobby, but it doesn't happen very often. So we can continue to just require one person in the lobby.
I think that's a good idea Cynthia, just continue with one person, it's done.
Like it's a small lobby, you know, and we've been, we've been pretty fortunate so far, thanks to everybody's help.
I think one person as well, I'm happy to see y'all open until four as well. I would like for us to go back to in-person meetings, so, you know, with mask mandate, so that's on my future agenda, but, so, but, I think that's great, so, because I was in there today picking up an agenda closer to four, so I was happy, I didn't wait outside, so thank you, so.
Do we have any more comments before we go into the regular session for new visits?
No ma'am, I don't think so.
Okay, first item is H, discussion and any necessary action regarding a resolution authorizing submission of the 2020, 21, 22 Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. And y'all all tell Cynthia thanks, she's had a lot of work to keep up and stuff to go with, okay. Cynthia, you got an update for us?
Yes, thank you Mayor, it is, it is a team effort. This is one of the things that we need to continue to do is, as you all are aware, there's a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross when we are going for a federal grant, and this is one of them, so what it does is just a resolution, as you said, authorizing the submission of that community development block grant, and as a reminder, that submission is due May 3rd, so I've been giving you all that timeline. We do have one more on the line if there are questions, and you can speak to those, but if not, we would just recommend approval of this to continue on that path of checking those boxes that we need to check for the grant submission.
Any questions from anybody? Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion of any kind? Then we'll have a roll call vote. Shannon, you want to do the roll call?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then we'll move on to I, discussion and any necessary action regarding a proposed final plant as set out in Section 1. You know, I have a motion to approve that.
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
Has staff reviewed this final plant?
Yes, staff has reviewed it, the engineers have reviewed it, and it is in conformance with the developers agreement and our ordinances as prescribed. P&amp;Z has reviewed it well and they are recommending approval.
So due to the ministerial nature of this, I move that we pass it.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. McCabe, give it a second. So we have approved the plant as presented.
Vote.
Mayor, would you like me to roll call the vote?
Yes.
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason? Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to J, discussion and any necessary action regarding letter of intent from Atomic Ranch for a utility agreement. And this again, Cynthia, let us know about this.
Thank you Mayor, this representatives that are interested in developing an upscale RV park and they're naming it Atomic Ranch, this is in the city of Rome's ETJ located at the south of 114 and east of 287. They have contacted Rome to explore water and sewer availability. They are in, they are in Aqua Texas CCN, so we will not be providing them with water, but they have still requested wastewater service. So you see what they're requesting there, they will bring infrastructure to their property at their own expense, and we have reviewed this and we are recommending approval. We do have them, developers are here, and they do have a presentation, just even though I was in the ETJ, I asked them to put together a presentation just to let you know what is happening. Sean, if you want to talk to any of the other conversations you have in the benefits for Rome and the capacity of Rome to service that, I will bring up the, their presentation and when you're down there, we're down for that.
Yes, if people can mute their mics, there's multiple callers still have their mics on, so please mute. Yes, the, after talking to them and talking with the engineers, there is benefits to that, we have capacity at the East Wastewater Treatment Plant, along with, because we are also expanding that east plant. However, as we know that in the past, Prent Point is looking to develop the infrastr- The infrastructure will go along with that Prairie Point development in the future. And so it is a benefit to, one, get sewer to that location, that area of our city, and two, also help us assess more development in the future at the expense of the Atomic Ranch.
Okay, I believe we have Jack Dyer of Dyer Engineering and Dan Adonte on the line. I'm not sure if you guys see the screen or not. You have your first slide up. Who wants to speak to that?
Sure, this is Dan Adonte. I do not see the presentation on my screen, but I can just speak through some, some high-level points, if that helps. So I'm not sure what's, what's screen, okay. So again, long story short, we are very excited for this opportunity. We do build RV resorts. This is one that's very personal to us. As you can see through the slides, we've added a lot of pictures of what we're going for. The new RV industry is very different than just a blacktop, kind of minimized RV pads. This is going to be a much more of a draw. The RV industry has changed a ton in the last two years, with people work remote, with different people looking to camp, and lack of resources around Texas, and just the demand for this is really growing fast. And our spin on it should have a great impact for the city, the ETJ, and kind of for us as well, of what we're looking to bring to really fit Rome on the map. This RV industry is incredibly large, and these new TV shows and magazines that are really bringing a new edge and trend to the, not only the RVs, but the parks that they stay in. And so we're bringing that more of an attraction level with high-end architecture, high-end retrofit RVs that people can Airbnb, as well as come through and travel. So we will have plans to have, we'll have plans to have different levels of banquet halls, a swimming pool, different amenities involved, and potentially restaurants down the road that citizens will come. So there's going to be a huge draw for people to come to the city, to the area. Different amenities in the city will be used that should really increase different businesses and local businesses. And then as well, just to attract other developers, a different building. It's really going to be a draw in a lot of different ways, so we're very excited. I'm not sure, Cynthia, what page you're on, flipping through there, but if you want.
I have been just kind of scrolling through some of the pictures as you've been writing back to the park concept layout that you all included.
Yeah, I think that's a good page that I can kind of wrap up unless there's any questions out there. That concept really shows the new age and the new state-of-the-art, different development and constant plans of how this is laid out. So the amenities up front on the main road, and then there's going to be pool, recreation, dog parks. So it's going to be a very, very new niche that this, this is going to bring. And again, we, we really, we plan and expect to have magazines and features, really bring, bring a spotlight to the park, to the city. And it's a great environment that just brings a very specific clientele of down-to-earth, traveling people that they do have different markets that they will infiltrate into the economy locally, as well as just coming through. So we're excited. I think it's a win-win for bringing the sewer for both us and the city, and we're excited to look forward to get this thing built.
How many RVs would fit in that?
We have capacity up to about 300. That's normally the average that we would max out at.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do, I do.
Okay, go.
Oh, Dan, I am, I am your visitor. Actually, I've stayed at Parks Like This in Round Top, Texas.
Sure. Yes.
Visited there. So I've stayed at Parks Like This, and actually, my friend is building a park like this in Spice Wood, Texas, down by Marble Falls. So on her ranch is doing the kind of, not like this style, but doing the Airstreams and the mini cottages and stuff. So I'm super excited, love the theme. But would you be building like a Marty B's restaurant style here on, in your, in the park?
So yes, that's what we have as a concept plan. It could be used as a banquet hall, tied into some type of a restaurant or a satellite winery. That's one of the draws. So you will have people that either are staying at the park or locals that can bring that in. Exactly what level that's going to be, that's unforeseen at this point. But that's going to evolve as we build and really do our final architectural and how that, that lays out.
We would love for you to open a Marty B's, especially if it's for us to use as a restaurant. We do need restaurants here. I think for the locals to use. Official, I mean, I love Marty B's. We go to Marty B's, so it's one of my favorite restaurants, and for all of my friends as well. So it's huge if we could have a Marty B's here. Another thing, are, for your, it's just going to be the Airstream and then your one bedrooms, like your little tiny, it's kind of like a tiny home. What, what other, what else are you going to put in there as well? Is it going to be a container, container house?
It will not be. So we have, we're going to have a handful, probably up to about 10 or 15 maximum, Airstream, more of the retrofit type up front that can be more of an Airbnb. But the rest of it will be, be concrete pad sites, really done up with landscapes and features for people to come and actually stay at.
Okay, I'm very excited. Now, okay, because where's the exact location? Because I've tried to find it. I didn't know. Where's the exact location will this be? I'm trying to look, where's the, I couldn't find it, so.
At the bottom here, this is 287. See that, let me, is SH 114.
Okay.
As you, if you're going eastbound on 114, you're, it'll be on the south side of 114.
Okay. No, I'm super excited. I know that it'll be, it will be very popular because with the traffic, it's, you know, with the traffic for, that we get, I don't, I don't remember exactly what the travelers from Decatur, you know, that it's on 287, and especially for Texas Speedway, you know, would be huge. So I'm thrilled. I am very thrilled. Welcome, and thank you for looking into Rome for this.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anybody else, or has Ashley said it all?
Everybody else can go. I'm a visitor.
We are pleased you're looking at Rome.
Both Michelle Ty and I have our hands up.
Okay, see, I can't see anything but the layout now. It's on my screen, so y'all bear with me.
Ladies first.
Okay, now y'all are back, okay. Michelle, Sam, let the ladies go first.
I just wanted to know, is this the first development that y'all have done yourselves, or have y'all done other ones?
Yes, so we have done multiple in the Austin area. We have different partners in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. I mean, we have developed and designed, and this one, we are keeping a little bit tighter and personal. We're going to have our, our personal touch and really keeping an oversight on this one as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And Sam?
Yes, I know Sean gave a nice introduction. Has anyone consulted with the Police Department or the Fire Department? Because I believe he said 300 spaces. I'm guessing that's one to two people, so we're talking anywhere from 300 to 600 more people that, for the Fire Department and the Police Department. Has anybody discussed with them what the impact is?
Councilmember Eason, no, they're not going through the platting process because they're not going to subdivide. So they are in our ETJ, so we don't have anything to review. Now, they have contacted Tech Dot, the developers, contacted Tech Dot, recommended that they did because they are coming out onto 114. And so with the future plans of the 287 project that has a flyover on 114, they did contact them because that, they would, they're going to have to get, you know, access onto 114.
It seems like it could be quite a bit of impact to both Police Department and the Fire Department. Just a lot of slots, a lot of people.
So I can tell you, just from our experience holding this, different properties we've worked with before, it's a very well kind of self-secure system. We have people on site managing themselves. It's a very internal system. In the past, it's normally done very well to maintain that. Fire systems, very small fire loads, and we'll have medics on site and people included. So hopefully, it's not a big impact, but if there's anything y'all need from us, we are happy to help and explain our insurance and different requirements and policies that we have internally.
If we're all able to come to a wonderful deal, do you have a goal to be open by?
We would hope to, within a year. 12 months is our anticipated, yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Josh?
Yeah, so you kind of asked that question. I was looking at, what is y'all's timeframe? When do y'all look at starting construction, finishing construction, all that? And then if you don't mind sharing, how much are y'all looking to invest in this whole property that we all are going to be owning?
Sure, I can give you rough information for all of that. Obviously, our next steps is to fine-tune both of those items. Again, construction, we have a little bit of development and entitlements to, to wrap up here in the next two to three months. We ideally have engineering for a couple of months to finalize that. And then I would hope, at an earliest date, start construction within six months. This is typically a six-month build to get off the ground, but there will be some continual construction. Again, hopefully, within a year, we're opening the doors. Dollar amount, most of these parks go up in roughly that $10 million range, and there's plus or minus depending on different phasing and quantities that we, we decide to include.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, so we're awaiting your grand opening sign. Josh has another question.
It's Sam.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, Sam does, okay.
Cynthia, this is a question for Cynthia, and this is the nature of this agenda item. We were talking about access to sewer for the, for them to be able to use the East Side Wastewater Treatment Plant, is that correct?
Uh, East Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so the whole point of this item is, I mean, they're tapping in in the ETJ, and I mean, welcome, but they want to know if they can tap into our wastewater treatment plant, right?
The whole intent, yes, is a letter of intent, so there would be a developers agreement that would follow, that would come before council.
And is there any cost to the city of Rome for this?
They are paying for the infrastructure.
They are?
Yes.
So there is no cost to the city of Rome for their tapping in?
Unless, unless we wanted, and this could be a benefit or, or not, just zero-sum game, if we wanted to tag on and upgrade and upsize, we would have that opportunity, which could be a positive if it was something that we wanted to pursue. And I can let Sean talk to that more, but other than that, no.
And we discussed potentially having them, if they're willing to be annexed into the city?
We did, and I think we kind of came to the conclusion that it's probably, I think we're getting enough benefit by, it's going to be meter, by the way. So we're not, it's, we're not, it's not going to be individual sites. So it will be a meter that will go to their site, and then they will charge it from there, charge their customers from there.
So all they would be paying for in the future would be the use of the sewer? And there would be no assessment of impact fees? I mean, I'd like to see them come in, absolutely. Actually, Carmen, per the discussion that I'm thinking of in my head, I think I would like to move further discussion on this agenda item to executive session when we, when we hold executive session.
You certainly have the right to do that. I would just add one comment right now. The only item that's really in front of you is a letter of intent, and it does contemplate that there will be further negotiations and a further development agreement that would, that could conceivably address a lot of the concerns that you've raised. But at this point, we're way ahead of the game to getting to that document.
Okay, so all we're doing is accepting a letter of intent, and the letter of intent really has no legal weight to it.
Well, I hate, I hate to say that. It is an expression of the city's desire and intent to work out along the lines that are described in the letter. It's something that they can take to their financial organizations, to their bankers. They can represent to them that we have indicated we have capacity and that we can address their needs. But it is not a development agreement, and we have not even, you know, put pen to paper yet to address any of those issues.
Okay, thank you. And we, then I'll skip all those additional questions, and we cannot go to executive session.
Okay, anybody else with questions?
No, I just want to say, Dan, I wish you would just add in, bring in a Marty B's, so.
Okay.
You think that should be a game changer, that Marty B has got to come?
No.
Okay, now we're ready to welcome you guys.
We approve this.
There's nothing to approve right now, I don't believe, Josh. It's just more informative.
Yes.
You do need to authorize the city administrator to execute the letter of intent on behalf of the city.
And Cynthia, haven't you already done that?
No, I wouldn't presume to do that without council direction.
Okay.
This is Cynthia asking us permission to do it.
Correct.
I make the motion that we approve for Cynthia to move forward with this agreement with them.
In a second.
I second. Ashley.
Okay, Shannon, you want to take it from here?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason? Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, hey, move quick. We're waiting for y'all to get here. Okay, we're going to, okay, we're going to move down to item K, discussion and any necessary action regarding the roles and responsibilities of city council members in the chain of command. Mr. Eason, that is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I've written something up, so if you'll give me a moment, I'm going to read it to you. Intuitively, I've always recognized that following a defined chain of command is critical to the performance, effectiveness, and especially the morale of an organization. I have personally witnessed, and yes, been guilty of, the violation of the chain of command to a disastrous result. I've seen money lost, projects fail, employees lose their jobs, and high-ranking executives sacked, all because people violated the chain of command. I've done some internet surfing on the subject. I will share some of it with you now. The chain of command exists to assure efficient and accurate communication, orderly and organized operations, and proper allocation of time and resources. When the chain of command is broken, the entire business can suffer. Ideally, everyone from the top down will adhere to the chain of command. However, there are instances when people will bypass the chain of command and initiate- and initiate communications with people two or more runs above or below them on the ladder. This is always bad business etiquette. Such behavior inevitably creates issues for the immediate supervisor, and it can result in, one, a supervisor not being made aware of issues, thereby having no opportunity to address or remedy them. Two, the appearance to the supervisor's boss, higher-ups, our citizens, that there is ineffective or poor communication with employees. Three, the supervisor being unable to make effective and informed decisions regarding issues and work plans, thanks to the staff rerouting important information outside of the department. Naturally, skipping the immediate supervisor will create tension and friction, which can often spill over into the rest of the department. Not only is overall morale lowered when the supervisor feels marginalized and disrespected by employees, but it places the offending employee's job security in jeopardy. Dip down. When an owner, executive, or senior-level manager dips down to engage the direct reports employees, this is also a bypass from the chain of command, but from the opposite direction. A few reasons why a boss or owner might dip down. One, the boss may have little or no confidence in the supervisor's ability to effectively perform the job with resulting frustration, leading them to engage supervisor subordinates directly. Two, the boss may overreact to minor issues, believing they must fix every little problem. The boss, three, the boss has a social management style and likes to mingle and help employees. Four, the boss has an inflated ego, which causes him or her to overstep their boundaries and unnecessarily flex their power and authority. Five, the boss may be unaware or oblivious that he or she is creating a problem. In most cases of dipping down, the owner slash boss will not inform the supervisor they are communicating with his or her subordinates. Thus, unless the employee says something, the supervisor is unaware that the boss is directing the staff. Ramifications of bypassing, the consequences of frequent bypassing in either direction can range from bruised egos to organizational chaos. And despite what the initiator may believe, bypassing has a negative impact on every party involved. Owners, operators, and execs who dip down cause problems for not only their direct reports and the frontline staff, but themselves. By appropriating the time and manpower resources of the direct reports, the business as a whole will likely experience a number of lower performance metrics. And if the higher-ups' education experience is in an area such as strategic planning, they may lack the knowledge and qualifications to effectively manage employees on the front line, meaning they don't necessarily understand that aspect of the business and will be a poor proxy for the supervisor anyway. Additionally, interfering with the direct reports' job duties distracts from their own responsibilities, also causing their individual performance to suffer. Now, back to what I've, back to me. With all this said, a city is just like a business. I want to encourage everyone elected, appointed, or employed by the city of Rome to respect the chain of command. It's come to my attention that Rome is suffering from violations of the chain of command. I don't know why Chief Love has decided to resign, but a violation of the chain of command may have contributed. I don't know. We have a well-defined reporting hierarchy. Please respect it, follow it. We will all be more effective and benefit for it. Thank you.
Does anybody have any comments to add to that or questions? We'll consider that informative. We will move on now to the next item.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Majors had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. She is no longer on my screen. So y'all help me watch out for her hands.
I'll try to be your eyes.
I appreciate it.
Sam, I think that was great that you brought that up, especially for Chief Love. It was, it was sad to see him go into what was brought up regarding his departure. So I think, I thank you for saying what you did. So I think everyone should respect their chain of command and as well as all of our employees, volunteer firefighters, police officers, and elected officials as well. So I think we should all be held accountable for our actions. So thank you, Sam, for bringing that up.
Okay, we'll move on now to item K. Discussion and necess, I'm sorry, that was Sam. Let's go to item L. Discussion and any necessary action regarding expending 2021 funds on a generator. And this will be myself and Sean of when we had the god-awful ice storm and Bobo Crossing lost power. It came to my attention at that time that we had no generators down there, a generator or whatever it will take to run that. We also could have lost electrical power at 3433 tank. They don't give away generators. And Sean, do you have a good estimate for what they will cost us?
Yes, ma'am. It's something I've been looking into, and it's just not only the generator. So you also have to have transfer switches and also some SCADA updates, whatever. But however, a generator to, based on projections, is going to cost about $180,000 to $200,000. But it's just not going to be your, I won't go to Home Depot and get a small generator. We're going to need anywhere from 160 KW to 194 KW generator.
And that's for one generator, right?
Yeah, that'd be one generator. It would be portable. Yeah, so, you know, so we can have stationary generators at each site, or we could do portable generators. However, you know, each site will have to be retrofitted with transfer switches, and then also update to the SCADA system. And so, you know, so it's just not a, I'm just going to go and get a generator from Walmart and plug in a, my refrigerator like some people think. It's more complex than that.
Right, and that would be with a quick start?
Transfer switch, yes. So once, again, you're going to have to get engineers, you're going to have to get electricians involved. And so it's going to be, again, a large thing that we have to go out for bid and stuff, because it's going to be, it's going to be a pretty good-sized project.
In your gut feeling, do we need it or not?
It would be beneficial, at least if we start retrofitting sites with transfer switches. And then, you know, we can look at possibly purchasing a generator later. If we do run out of power and the future somewhere happens, we could, you know, contract with United Rentals or another large rental company that does have portable generators and maybe be able to get one on rent. But in the future, it's always best to have something on site.
Right. So say we are able to get one, not two, which place would you choose?
I would prefer a portable one because then I could transfer it to everywhere, anywhere I need to. It's not just stationary.
And they're not too big to easily move?
Yes, I mean, you can move them. They're very large, but however, they can be moved with a, you know, a pickup truck.
Okay. Well, Council, we don't need to decide on this tonight. Budget time's coming up, what, starting March the 20th. Let's keep this in mind. I didn't hear you, Josh. I mean, Sean.
I just want to be cautious that, you know, it doesn't do us any good to jump on a generator if our sites are not retrofitted to, to transfer power. So we need to start with the transfer switches and the components at each site before we go get a generator. A generator does.
Let me understand, if we do that, and God forbid we lose power, then we could get a rental possibly to utilize on the interim?
Yes, there's an option to rent at different locations. However, in my previous life, it's always nice to have a standby generator for use.
Okay, and see, I'm going to show my generator ignorance, but can, are all generators interchangeable if you retrofit?
This is where you get engineers and electrical engineers involved, where they will size your sites, and you'll buy the generator that's the largest enough generator to run your biggest site. Then you'll know that that generator will run every other smaller site.
Okay, good. Good to know. So y'all keep this in mind. And when we get ready to look at budgets, this may be something we want. And if, and I don't know if I'm correct, Sean, I think Bobo Crossing has one source. The 3433 tank has another source from electricity. Different providers. Is that right?
Yes.
So might, if we might be lucky and just one site go down on the thing. So keep that in mind, see what, you know, what your presentation is. And are you familiar with the state of Texas by board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would that be any good source?
Yeah, yeah, majority of your stuff is bought on either by board, HTAC, or some type of co-op. And most, most of your large companies are already participants of a co-op. Or we could piggyback off of another city or county that already has a contract with a company for purchase.
Right, and not have to go through the bidding process.
Technically, Mayor, that is the bidding process when you go through that.
Right, so we wouldn't have to go through the time constraints that would be put on a bidding process.
Correct. Wouldn't have to do it twice.
Right. Okay, sounds good. And Sean, we'll look forward to what you say at the March 20th meeting. Yes, Mr. Eason?
Yeah, Sean, would you repeat the ballpark figure of the cost for a generator, please?
Then, this is going off the initial cost of a generator purchased about 10 years ago, 15 years ago. It ran about $175,000 to $195,000.
And that was 10 years ago?
Yes, and that's only the generator. That does not cover the cost of the transfer switches and any electrical upgrades that will be needed on each site.
Okay, when we had our, when we had the presentation done about water and wastewater impacts and where we are on what we charge for water and sewer, was this item considered as part of the infrastructure upgrades that may be required?
You're talking about the rate study?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, because this just came in, the numbers just came in not too long ago. So I have not been able to get that information to the five-year plan or the O&amp;M stuff to our rate people. However, I'll be talking to them about that.
Well, I'm sorry, just to interject, we are, you know, every department is going to be bringing, you know, their top priorities. We're going to, there's a lot of different things on the table that you all have to consider in the budget that are some of these big capital expenditures. This is, this is a new one that was, that came to light because of the winter weather that we did experience. So we are working on bringing those to you, so you have a handle on all the different things that are needed. And there are some tough decisions that will have to be made. But we are going to bring some scenarios to you as well. And so Sean is working on that, and we are, we are inviting Mr. Eckhart back again on Saturday. And he's the gentleman that presented the water rate study.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You know, hopefully we won't have the snow and ice again, but heaven only knows what storms will show up this spring. So let's all think positive and go forward. L is the next thing, and it is similar to this. Discussion regarding the city's emergency management plan. Chief Fitch, are you on the line?
Yes, Mayor, I'm on the line.
Okay, this one's yours, talking about the emergency management plan.
I didn't really have a direction to go because I saw that it was on the agenda. I was on the council meeting when it was put on the agenda as far as having a plan. But I'm not sure what direction you were wanting me to go when that was addressed on the council for the agenda.
What I think I had in mind was a clearer piece of paper, if you will, that covered the city's emergency management plan. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think Cynthia said that was on the to-do list to clarify that.
Well, as you remember, Mayor, you had a question about the emergency management plan. So I did talk with the chief, and he, we do have one, and that's what you have in your packet. And that's not the entire thing. As you know, we fall under Wise County. And the Wise County's emergency management plan is much longer. It's 700 pages. So this is something that they have that just kind of lays out, it's like an executive summary, if you will, of emergency management of the National Incident Management System and what that, what that hierarchy is during an emergency. So that's what you have in your packet. Yeah, you just said you wanted something on the emergency management plan, and so we were just bringing that to you. And Chief was going to just answer questions if you had some.
Okay, or so are both of y'all okay with the way ours is written now? I don't mean the people that fall in line, but are we detailed enough that if either one of y'all decided to win the lottery and go away, that somebody could pick up that plan and go forward?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's detailed where it needs to be detailed. Basically, I'm going to kind of refer back to item K when it talks about chain of command. Our, our plan that we have down, you don't want to be black and white because every incident's different. But the plan that we have that you see back, I think it's page 70, 71, is just a general guideline on a chain of command that we can be organized if any incident happens. The situation, the situation we came in on the winter weather is we knew it was going to be bad, and we started preparing. Fire started preparing on the 8th, and I think we had our department head meeting on the 9th, and we started talking about it. And I know that Cynthia, well, all the department heads were working on some ideas of what we might have to look at as far as, in case of an emergency.
Sure.
But the, but the situation on that, and the reason why I say not everything's going to be black and white is because all of us fall under different training, and most of that training's based off of NIMs, National Incident Management System. And we all have different levels of NIMs training to be department heads in a city. So a lot of that not being black and white is because of that training. Because what I deal with in the fire side is totally different than what Chief Love might deal with. You know, I might be more in mitigation of hazard. He's more mitigation of, you know, I don't know the exact word I'm trying to find, but, you know, so each situation's different. Just like with the city administrator, her, her setup and her things that she looks at is different, along with public works. So we all have what we have to follow as far as our departments. So having the plan we have without being completely just, I mean, because be honest with you, just like Wise County, she said, was 700 pages. I don't know the exact history going back how far or whatever, but I know at one point we looked at it a couple of years ago of having our own emergency management plan. But you're, you're talking 500, 600 pages. And I mean, I got a copy of DeKingers, and DeKingers is probably a four-inch notebook.
Oh, well, y'all just carry on like you. Oh, well, y'all just carry on like you are. My thing was, I was saying, who's in charge? Who's in charge, not by any of the council or people working here? And I said, well, we have an emergency management plan, but it doesn't really identify, you know, if this turns over, Susie does it, and John does something else. But you're saying y'all are fine with the way it is and we defer to your expertise.
Right, and, and, and I see what you're saying, and, and, and that's basically what I'm trying to say is, in the plan we have, like I said, on page, I think it's seventy-one, it like kind of lines out the big, the basic chain of command, because that's the main thing you're gonna need. Because if you don't have that chain of command, then you're just gonna have chaos. Because all of us are trained in our own departments on what needs to be done to mitigate a problem. So to have that chain, we all four, or however many are there, can work together so, you know, Chief Love could do his expertise, you know, city administrator has her expertise, and we all work together and pull together on that. So that's why on the plan, you don't see just every detail, because like I said, it'll be in the seven hundred, eight hundred page range. And then as far as having that chain of command, then it allows one person to talk to county. Because, for example, if all four department heads contacted county at a separate time and requested something, and it was all the same request, so you had four of the same requests, the county's gonna give us those requests. But there could be a fee involved, there could be, you know, there's a lot of things out there that you gotta take into consideration. You don't just get something free every time an emergency happens. There's some resources you have to pay for. And if all four of us called at separate times and got that request taken care of, then there's a chance that, you know, we're, we're doing more harm than we are benefiting. Plus, you get too many people calling, calling back and forth. So that's why we came up with the plan we have. And we tweaked it a little bit based off of what happened in the winter event. Plus, I think one of the things we learned, and this might help you for what you were asking as far as a plan, we did learn some things, like one of the things is, is, and I'm gonna use the word informal. We did an informal E O C, Emergency Operating Center. But when I say informal, we just did it by phone, we didn't do it in person. Next time on an event that's gonna be, you know, of course, you don't know sometimes. But next time on a bigger event like what happened in the winter weather event, we're, we're gonna look at doing an actual formal E O C to where we have it set up in a location and the department heads are working together in that location. Because one of the things that we learned from this incident was sometimes it was hard to get ahold of each other phone-wise. It might be five or ten-minute delay where we needed an answer or a decision right then. So there's a lot of things we learned, and we tweaked a little bit in our plan as we go. But, you know, we can look, and it will be something we need to look at in the future as far as coming up with our own emergency plan. Okay, if we want those four, five, six hundred pages, I see the City of Rome doing that. But as of right now, I think the best thing for the size we are and how we have our initial command structure down, that we go ahead and still work off the county. The problem with the county, and it's not necessarily a problem, they're in the process of changing their plans, so they're between plans right now. So that's where, again, it goes back to the training, that we're all trained in the National Incident Management System, which is a command structure. And then we're, we're making those decisions based off our training, if that helps.
Yeah, sounds good, and I think we all have faith in you and yours, so I'm sorry, Cynthia.
I'm sorry, Mayor. One thing I would just interject is, just as a reminder, I mean, we do, the fire chief is the designated emergency manager coordinator for the city. And just as, just as a reference point, for many counties, it's very common for the smaller cities to fall under the county's emergency management plan. I think you, you would see that very consistently throughout the two hundred fifty-four counties across the state of Texas that many of the smaller cities do fall under the county's emergency management plan. Some of the bigger ones, probably not, but the smaller ones, definitely. So it's very common for that to be the case.
And, and we saw in this last winter event how that benefited us because we had a, we had an open dialogue with the county, and there was some quick resources taken care of because we're falling under the county. So there was, we weren't having to act on declarations and then spend all the time waiting for the county to accept our declaration. We were basically working straight to the county, and they were helping us, you know, if we needed to declare anything or get resources.
Okay, does anybody have any additional or questions or anything for the chief?
I do. Chief Fitch, I was actually gonna reach out to you. Are we a part of the Wise County Fire Marshal's Office, Office of Emergency Management? I see that all of the other cities in Wise County are a part of it. Are we a part of it as well, or not?
When you say a part, what are you trying to ask from being a part?
I mean, are we, are we a part of their alert system? Because they post something on their social media every day and like, or there's talking about their storm shelter, the severe storms coming this weekend. But they posted on their social media, you know, about the severe weather season coming and how they, how, let me go back. Click on the link, and if we, so we can alert you. But, and it says, if we can't reach you, we, if we can't reach you, we can't alert you. But it has like Decatur, Bridgeport, Aurora, Boyd, Chico, and Paradise, and, you know, and Decatur. But can we be a?
I'm sorry, if I may, actually, I just found out about that. That's the mass, Chief Fitch, that's the mass notification system that the county has. I just found out about that on this Tuesday's call. So, yes, we can participate in that. And that's gonna be in my, now that I've learned about it, it is a cost to the city. Have it budgeted for, but I absolutely think it's a good idea. So I'll be bringing that to the council for next budget sessions.
I, I, I see what you're asking councilperson majors. Just to clarify, when, when you sign up for something like that with the county, the county's only giving you that information, just like the National Weather Service would post a severe warning. But you gotta make sure that you separate it. I'll give you a good example, is the storm sirens. The county is not responsible for telling the City of Rome to set off their storm sirens. And there's a lot of confusion on that. A lot of people think that since the county tells you when bad weather's coming, that they're responsible for letting the cities know to set off their sirens. No, that's actually the City of Rome. In the same way with any other emergency event, it's still the responsibility of the city to make sure that we give our warnings or what we need to do on that. Now, do I, as long as we keep it separated, I think it's a great idea to have more information from the county coming to us about weather events and things like that. We just need to make sure that we understand, even though we fall under their emergency manage, management plan or we listen to their, you know, warnings and things like that, we're still responsible for making the decisions. And that's why we have this emergency management plan, that we still have to make decisions for our city. And as far as being a part of, to answer another part of that question with the fire marshal and emergency management, when I, when we're talking about getting with the county as far as a winter weather event and, and working with the county as far as resources, we actually work with the emergency management office for the county. As far as the fire marshal, we work with the fire marshal on information on, you know, burn bans and things like that. But we, but like if we have a fire in the city limits, the fire marshal won't come in, or, or the emergency management won't come in unless they're invited. So like if I had a fire, you know, right here at two sixty-one North School Road at the fire station, the department's in charge of investigating, but if we'd like assistance from the fire marshal or we need anything from the fire marshal, we have to invite him in and allow him to come in because he can't come in and just investigate anything that happens in the city. So that kind of hit about three or four different answers to your question. That's why, I apologize, that's why I asked you what, what direction were you going with the question? Because there was so many categories of answers to that.
No, well, thank you so much for answering my question and then also educating me. So I greatly appreciate it, so thank you.
You bet, my door, my door is always open.
Well, wonderful, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Anybody else have questions for this gentleman? Now, at one time, and we haven't seen it happen quite too often on our personal phone, we would get notifications from the sheriff's office, I believe, by the voice there, that there's stormy weather, et cetera. Is that still alive and well? For some reason, we may have fallen off their call list, we being our personal house. Are you familiar with that, chief?
No, ma'am, I'm not familiar with the one from the sheriff's office.
Yeah, okay.
I know, I know there's, there's a lot of groups out there, and at one time, we were looking at Code Red. And there was some information based on Code Red. Again, it's, you know, it all goes back to how strong we are with it and, and what we do as a city.
Right, okay, what about anybody else? Well, we thank you and thanks a bunch for keeping us safe, you and Chief Love also, during all this icy thing we had, and for helping those that had problems along the way. You'll never know how much that is appreciated. So we're going to.
I'll pass on.
Okay, we're gonna move on to a proclamation of appreciation. Police Chief Love, are you online? Maybe not, but he can, people can hear this and know who they think of him. It's City of Rome, Texas, a proclamation of appreciation of the city council of the City of Rome to Police Chief Sam Love for his service to the City of Rome from September the ninth, twenty sixteen, until March the twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And it reads, whereas the council of the City of Rome, Texas, wishes to express their appreciation to Police Chief Sam Love for his invaluable service to the City of Rome. And whereas Sam Love served with distinction and honor as the City of Rome's police chief for over five years. And whereas Police Chief Love's dedication and loyalty to Rome and its citizens has been instrumental to the enhanced welfare growth and development of the City of Rome. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, it's the city council of the City of Rome hereby expresses their heartfelt appreciation to City of Rome's Police Chief Sam Love for his unselfish contributions in service to the City of Rome and its citizens. Passed and approved, yes?
This Sam Love, I've been here the whole time, just couldn't get to the unmute button, passed and approved, but I've been listening and I've.
Well, I, we wanted you to know that we do thank you, and we appreciate the five years of service.
I appreciate it.
On the thing.
You well, and wish well to whoever comes in next.
All right, well, we appreciate that, and you be safe in your new endeavor. And Josh McCabe was responsible for getting this put together. So we do, we do appreciate you so much, and we wish you the best wherever you end up and whatever you're doing.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Uh-huh, take care.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now then, we have down to, oh.
Go ahead and call for a vote to authorize you to sign that proclamation on behalf of the city.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we should. The, we have this attorney here for a reason. He says we need to take a vote to authorize the city to sign this proclamation of appreciation. Josh?
Yes, thank you, I did have this agenda item out, because I did wanna thank Chief Love for all of his work that he's done over the last several years. I know a lot of law enforcement has taken some negativity.
Do we still have you, Josh?
With everything that he's done, he's done such a great job. Whoever comes in to fill his shoes, it's definitely gonna have a, a pair of shoes to fill. So good luck with whatever you decide to do, Chief Love.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe, we appreciate it.
Anybody else? Well, you know, we all do appreciate it, on the thing. So Shannon, you wanna take the vote from here?
I make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I think the whole council wants to second it, so Shannon, go for it.
I know you were my, mouth my name, Shannon, you're on mute though.
Thank you. Councilmember Ty?
Hi.
Councilmember Ethan?
Hi.
Councilmember Major? Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that ends our reg, our regular meeting. We're going to close for the time being. We'll be back, we're going in.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
We have agenda item O to consider.
Well, oh, okay, I guess we need to do that. I got so excited about the proclamation, I overlooked this one. It's O, discussion and any necessary action regarding accepting the resignation of Police Chief Sam Love. Cynthia, it shows you as the action.
Uh, well.
We just need a motion in a second to accept the resignation.
Do we have an emotion?
It looks like Councilmember Easton is making the motion and Councilmember McCabe is seconding.
Okay, thank you, because I can't, Josh has disappeared off my screen again, so. You wanna call the vote, Shannon?
Yes, ma'am, Councilmember McCabe?
Hi.
Councilmember Ty?
Hi.
Councilmembers Easton?
Hi.
Councilmember Majors?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Now we can move to executive session. We're going to close out this regular meeting and adjourn for five minutes or so while we all get back online for the executive session.
Mayor, if I could, we are going into executive session under section five five one point oh seven four, the personnel exception.
Okay. What about five five one oh seven two?
And we may also consult with the attorney, and we'll go under section five five one point oh seven one.
Oh seven one, okay. Can we talk about real estate there, sir?
If we need to talk about real estate, then we also need to cite section five five one oh seven two.
Right, okay.
Attorney, I did not get your question, I'm sorry.
Just if you will reflect in the minutes that the mayor has announced that we're going into executive session under each of those sections, oh seven one, oh seven two, and oh seven four.
Yes, sir.
And it's eight o'clock P M, and we'll reconvene about eight oh five in executive session.
Does everybody have the information to go into the other, other room? Have you sent that, Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm hoping I have it, I'm not sure if I do.
It should be in your email I sent around four fifteen.
Okay, thank you. And so we leave this meeting and we'll go to the other one.
All right.